Something to do.
Something to do.
I call the Board of Aldermen meeting to order for the City of Warrenton on October 1, 2013. If everyone would stand and face the flag, Alderman Dreyer is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I want to make a couple changes to the agenda on Item 12A, approval to hire Police Officer Anthony.
I haven't had so.
Sir? Okay, I want to take Item 12A off the agenda. In Item 18, for executive session, I want to delete personnel and just leave legal counsel.
You can keep deleting items, Jerry, if you want.
You start me.
Yeah.
The other thing I would ask, if you have a cellphone on, if you would turn it off or turn it to vibrate so it doesn't distract people in the meeting. Okay, Item 3, approval of minutes, regular board meeting minutes of September 17, 2013.
Motion to approve of the regular board meeting minutes of September 17.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the regular board meeting minutes of September 17, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark is absent.
Motion carried 5-0 with one absent. Item 4, hearing from the public. We give this opportunity for any of the people in the audience to come forward and address the board. We ask that your remarks be limited to five minutes or less, and please keep your remarks civil. So, at this time, if anyone wants to address the board, please come forward. No one wants to talk to us, okay? And in that case, we'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen and ask them for their comments to the public or to the board.
I do have a few things to address, and in light of, we've had some fairly heavy topics over the last few weeks that have been discussed, whether it's the overpass or other issues. But we're just going to talk about good news, at least right now. I had the opportunity, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, to attend the FARA Walk, the Fredericks Attaxia Research Association. Those people came and got permission to close some streets and hold a second annual fundraising 5K run and walk. These are friends of mine, friends of Alderman Person Castily. She did a heck of a job raising funds, and again this year, they exceeded their expectations. I think they had over 400 participants and raised in excess of $20,000 for a very good cause. Also, soccer season is well underway. I coached two teams out at the Soccer League, and have had the opportunity in between games to meander around and contact different people that are enjoying our parks, both from within the community and from outside of our community. Are getting very good reviews for the program, not without complaints certainly, but good reviews for some of the changes and the responsiveness of the city in making some changes. Getting very, lots of compliments and comments on the additional parking spaces. As I observed this weekend, both parking lots nearly jam-packed, and I wonder how we manage before those additional spaces. So, like I said, it's nice to see good things happening in our community.
That's it?
That's it.
Alderman Flake? Alderman Dreyer? Alderman Castily?
My turn.
Your turn. Go for it.
Okay, and I agree with John. That was a great event that Saturday morning, a lot of out-of-town people, so our community reflected very well, so it was a great event. Something I would like to bring up to the board and for consideration going forward, it seems since I've been on the board, we've been putting out fires. We've been putting out fires on things that have been going on well before this side of the board, except for John, was elected. I feel at this point, before the year end, we as a board need to sit down and do some more strategic planning of where we see we are right now. What are our strengths as a community? What are our weaknesses? What do we need to take advantage of that we do as a city? So, I would like to propose that we look into the next couple months to where we have time to spend a few hours together as a board and discuss our strengths and weaknesses and the opportunities and threats that we have as a community, so we can do some strategic planning and lay out a plan going forward, so we can actually do something forward-thinking instead of what we've been doing, I feel, since I've been here, is reacting. So, if that's something the board would consider, I think I can get some assistance from Terry and some of her coworkers to get this process going, to find a date that we can actually sit down and actually strategically plan where we need to go as a city.
I think it's a good idea. We, a number of years ago, we had a board retreat, I think it was at Ennsbrook. I don't know, it was an overnight or maybe, or something. And so, I thought it was very helpful to sit around and just talk when you don't have to answer questions or deal with issues, to really dream of what the city's about or would you like to see. So, I think that's an excellent idea.
I third that motion.
We'll see if we can work something out.
Okay.
Or at least it would be worth brainstorming about, maybe in a work session or something to that effect.
Yeah, and it takes more than a half hour.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking a few hours of commitment time at a minimum.
And that's kind of why we have work sessions, because we're unlimited on time.
Right.
If we try to crowd it in with these meetings, it makes these meetings way too long, so. Anything else? Alderman Ock? I'm down to Mayor's remarks. First remark I want to make to the general public is, it looks like our audit is coming to an end. The auditors have contacted us and reserved our chambers for the 8th of October at 6:00 PM in the evening. State Auditor Tom White, is that, am I pronouncing his name right?
Yeah.
He's going to be here and deliver the results of the city audit, so public's welcome to attend. We're kind of waiting to hear back from them, whether they're going to permit us to televise the information or not, so I'm not sure why they wouldn't, but if they give us the okay, we'll probably go ahead and televise the auditor's remarks, so. The other thing I might talk about, first, Melody and I were gone last week. We had a chance to attend the Missouri Municipal League Conference in Branson, Missouri, all about municipal government. I think it was a total of about a three-and-a-half-day conference. I'll give Melody a chance, if she would like to comment, whether you think it was worthwhile or not, and whether you've got anything pertinent out of it. Go ahead.
I think it was really good. There were over 600 municipalities that were represented. They had concurrent sessions going on Monday and Tuesday with different ones. One of the sessions I attended was Missouri Sunshine Law. Tom Durkin from the Attorney General's Office was there, and he presented it, and of course, this is still the same book that's been out since 2011, which he said, since the laws have changed now, they are hoping to have a new book out by the beginning of around 2013, at least, is what they're hoping for anyways. One of the things, just a reminder, when the board's sending out emails, if they could CC the city clerk, so that way I've got a record of it, that would be great. But it was very good, very informative. They had a lot of, like, morale sessions to attend and different things like that, so it was really good.
Good, good. I'll kind of reiterate what Melody said. I tried to attend several sessions every day. First day I attended a couple sessions called Government, Municipal Government 101, Municipal Government 102. Very informative, picked up quite a few things, just setting in on that. One of the better programs I attended was the general session where all the members were invited to attend. The speaker was Steve Usel. He's a world-renowned photographer for National Geographic. The title of his program was Open Roads, Open Minds, and he tied his speech into some of his award-winning photography work. Had a PowerPoint presentation, very impressive speech, all about problem-solving for cities and that type of thing, so that was kind of a neat thing. Another thing that caught my eye on one of the seminars was, the title of it was Stuff Our Lawyer Says, and I thought, you know, that might be worth going to. So, I went to that, and I'll pass these down for, this was a handout that the-
And that's not what this said. This does not say stuff.
No, and I was surprised by that, too, when he handed this out. Here, if everybody can, you might need one.
Chris, how'd you get a picture of this?
It turned out, the handout was actually better than the speech and the talk and so forth, but there's some good things in the handout that I thought was worthwhile. A couple things on the back page that jumped out at us, that he talked a little bit about, when the board makes the decision, and whether you're on one side or the other, you agree or disagree, once the majority has voted, the board owns the decision. Now, that's a good point, very, very well-taken, that once you're committed to it, you all own the decision. What else did he talk about? Talked about, if you've got a question for the attorney, you might be the only one that has the question, and you need to coordinate that question through management to save time. Maybe no one else on the board is interested in that question. You might get the answer by coordinate through management. But all in all, I thought it was a good program. I enjoyed it. The other thing I want to pass out, one of the things I find out when you go to conventions, you always want to get a picture of yourself to make sure you can prove that you were there. The MML convention next year is going to be in St. Charles, the City of St. Charles is a host, and so they were there promoting their Christmas and Santa Claus, so forth, and so they offered to take a picture of me and my spouse, so. A good deal, it's worth going. If the board, next year, it'd be great if we could all go, and I think we would all get something out of it, especially since it's so close here at home. The other thing I want to report to the public, last week I was invited to attend and participate in a meeting at Ennsbrook hosted by the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council. They had invited the Home Builders Association out to Ennsbrook and presented a program to them as to what Warren County has to offer. Steve Etcher was the emcee, and he started the meeting off with a three-and-a-half-minute video of Warren County and what goes on in Warren County. Steve later told me the company they hired to make the video, it had six hours of shooting time, and out of that six hours, it was edited down to three-and-a-half minutes. They told me they would provide us with a copy of that video, and maybe at our next board meeting, we can take three-and-a-half minutes, and I'd be happy to show the public on the board the video. Couple things on the, at the end of the program, it ended with a five-person panel for question and answer. Chris Gaines was on the panel, he's the superintendent of Schools of Wright City School System. Jeff Thompson's the manager of the Ennsbrook Village. Murray Brewer was on the panel, Mayor of Truesdale. Arden Engelagi was on the panel, Presiding Commissioner of Warren County, and myself. Members of the Home Builders Association was given an opportunity to submit questions to the panel, and each member on the panel given time to answer. Question number one was, using one word, describe your community. That will catch you off-guard, trying to think, what would one word be that you could describe your community? Each member of the panel took time and did, I thought, did a pretty good job answering that. What else was I gonna-
So, what'd you answer?
Friendly. Friendly was fine. And one of the things I hear from people all the time, why they like Warrenton, friendly people, so, but had to think about that for a little bit. What else was I going to tell you? Oh, another question was on, that we were all asked, what's your community doing to prepare for growth, water supply, wastewater, et cetera? You know, those were pretty easy to answer. I did get a comment from three or four of the people that were, are members of the Home Builders Association. I'll just read one of them to you. This is from a company out of Washington, Missouri, 21 Design Group. It's an engineer, his name is Jeffrey J. Huck, P.E., Principal. It said, "Mr. Dyer, it was a great meeting yesterday at the Warren County Home Builders Association meeting. I thought the entire program was full of excitement. I think Warren County and the surrounding area will be ripe for growth in the coming years, and I believe the recent manufacturing growth is just the beginning." I had three others, very similar type comments, so I thought it was a very worthwhile meeting. I enjoyed participating in it. And that's all I have. You want to put tardy here and me talk?
That's all you get.
That's all I get. Did I go over my five minutes?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Well, you kept it civil.
I was absent last week, so I got 10 minutes.
Well, I don't know, we have a rule about that, or-
No, not yet.
Not yet, we will.
All right, let me get my machine working again. I'm ready for Item Number 7, introduction of Emily Casey. Am I pronouncing that right?
It's Emily Case.
Case?
Yes.
As a practicum student for the Recreation Department with a start date of September 23rd, 2013. You want to do that introduction?
Sure. This is Emily. Emily started with us last week. She is a junior at Lindenwood University. I'm sorry, she's a senior at Lindenwood University. She is Recreation Administration student and has some experience working part-time in Illinois, some recreation departments and aquatic centers. So, Emily started with us, she's already taken kind of some projects on as far as planning for a couple of upcoming programs that we have, so she's doing a really good job for us so far, and very happy to have her.
Thank you. Welcome to the board. We don't need a motion on that, since we approved that at a previous meeting. Item Number 8, Cocoa Vapors Banner Sign Permit Extension. Jack, you want to address that, or someone here from?
I don't see, Lisa here. Received a request for a banner sign permit extension from Lisa Cullen at Cocoa Vapors for Section 425090, each business is permitted a total of 56 days to display banner signs per year. Her 56 days will expire on October the 4th, and she put on her request for extension that, just due to the cost of getting her permanent sign made, she is requesting three months' extension. And we did receive a letter today from the property owners that granted her a 30-day extension, permission, that they would let her keep a banner sign for another 30 days.
And she has a permanent sign on order?
Yes.
And she's waiting for delivery of that?
Well, I think she's waiting for the funds to purchase it.
Oh, the funds?
Since she's a new business, just starting up, is the way she explained it.
I'm a little reluctant to extend those things too far, because I think you add another 56 days, that those signs get a little torn and ratty and fluttery and, I mean, I could see giving her some leeway, but I don't know how the board feels about it, on what's your position on that.
What does the, what does the ordinance allow for an extension time-wise?
You can extend it as long as the board would decide. There's not a, there's not a time limit on it that says extensions can be permitted
And is she only allowed-
With a request from the board.
Is there a limit on the number of extensions she can get?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think logistically, there has to be some limit, because the banner signs are in it per year, how many days per year you get it.
Fifty-six per year. Days per year. That's what our ordinance says.
Trying to be consistent, I know we just granted an extension for church.
Till the end, till New Year's Eve, till the end of the year.
Till December 31st. She's asking for us in that. If we gave her a 90-day extension as she requests, aren't there additional ordinances that would pertain to the sign becoming in poor condition that you could enforce?
Yes, that's in place.
Yeah, it's an extension of a permit, and the ordinance for the permit says it has to be kept in good condition while, you know, while-
The owner of the building saying he will permit her to have another 30 days?
A letter was turned in today that he granted permission for another 30 days for the, for her to put a banner sign up.
If the landlord's given her 30 days, I don't know what, why it would go beyond that. You know what I'm saying?
I would make a motion to approve a 30-day extension for a banner sign for Cocoa Vapors.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, to approve a 30-day extension for Cocoa Vapors Banner Sign Permit Extension. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one absent. Thank you, Jack. Is that all you got?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. amended agenda items, do we have any amended agenda items?
No, sir.
We've already taken care of that. I'm ready to go to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer.
My first item for you this evening is a response to a request, I think it was a couple meetings ago, in regard to putting signs at the city limit entrances showing the fact that Miss Missouri State Fair Queen was a Warrenton resident. We gathered information from MODOT as far as what the cost for those signs would be, and if we want to put those on Highway 47, on both the north and south end of town, those signs would be $520 each. If we want to put them on the east and west I-70 boundaries, those signs would be $1,000 each, and we would need to extend our current agreement with MODOT to include those signs.
Have we been in touch with Ashley Bauer to see whether she would, has any objections to putting her name on that sign?
I believe she was, was she not here the evening that we discussed this?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember whether she was still here or not.
She didn't voice an objection, but I'm not certain that we have contacted her directly.
Okay.
As a courtesy, you want to show her the sign, so she knows what, I mean, it's attractive-looking sign, I think as a courtesy, you should do that.
I would agree with that, too. I mean, I would hate to spend money on a sign and then have her come and say, oh, well, I really don't want my name out there, for whatever reason, so just as a courtesy, the letter she assigned, I think we do need to let her know.
Can I, $1,000 a sign, oh my gosh! Is this not supplied by Missouri Prison Industries anymore? Because inmate labor costs must have gone through the roof.
High rate of robbery.
What's that?
Always expensive getting signs, what's going on? Like, when we've had a, what did they say last time, annexation? Tell us when you're done with the signs.
Well, just look at the cost of the fast-food signs out on the interstate.
I guess.
What tourism gets charged for that.
I realize it's expensive, but I think it's something we need to do, you know?
Oh, I agree.
I go to a lot of communities where you see signs for different things, state high school, football champion, whatever, and it adds value to the area you're going, you go, oh, that's interesting, and I think this would add value. So, I think we ought to do it.
Yeah, I'm not downing the project, I was just absolutely stunned by the cost of the signs.
Well, that's what happens when you have a captured market. You can't go out and shop the sign, you can't go to the sign.
What do you look at, number of signs, and are you talking about two on the interstate and two on 47, or what's the board's consideration there?
I could go either way on 47, I definitely think the interstate, we have to do that.
I think my opinion would be to put the two on the interstate and not the two on 47.
Mine also.
Brad?
Yeah.
Brad, put them on the interstate.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we purchase two signs for $1,000 apiece that will go on the city limit signs again on Highway 70, that state home of Ashley Bauer, 2013 Missouri State Fair Queen, upon approval of Ashley Bauer herself from the city.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Cornell. Have you got all that down, Melody?
Just for the record, John, we do a lot of prison ministry work, and I think the most pay somebody gets is like, still $595 for a month.
I thought so.
For a month.
Man, that's going to take them a-
And some jobs don't pay it, so somebody's making some money, but who did it?
Yeah, it must take them a whole lot of time to make those.
Would you read that back?
To approve to purchase two signs for Interstate 70 only, not Highway 47, right?
Right.
At $1,000 apiece that say home of Ashley Bauer, 2013 Missouri State Fair Queen, hinging on the fact that Ms. Bowers agreed with that.
With our permission. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one absent.
My next item for you this evening is the recommendations from the Tourism Commission meeting that was held on September 24th. There were a number of requests at that meeting. There were a total of seven requests for the interstate attraction signs at $600 each. A total of that's $4,200. There was also a request from the Warrenton Downtown Association for $1,900, which was for the billboard vinyl for their hometown Christmas event that's upcoming. Two requests from the City of Warrenton, one for $2,800 for the circus, and that is an up-to amount that'll be reconciled once the circus is completed. And then also from the City of Warrenton, which is to come from their contingency fund, it was not a budgeted item in the tourism budget, $1,296.35. This is for the holiday lights and decorations for the new posts, light posts that are out on Highway 47, so that they would be decorated the same as the post downtown.
So, the total request is the $10,196?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the board?
Well, billboard vinyl signs that only last one season, or certainly make the highway signs, we just wrote it for a bargain. Yeah, think about it. I'm making a motion, we accept the Tourism Commission's recommendation for the requests of $10,196.35.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the tourism recommendations for the advertising in the amount of $10,196.35. Roll call, please.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one absent.
And then a reminder for you that this Friday, October the 4th, is the annual Employee Appreciation Lunch. It will be held from 11:30 to 1:30 with all of our city employees invited, to be held down at the new grounds and maintenance building during that period, and certainly all of you are invited to attend, along with our employees.
I think the employees appreciate, any board members that can make it, I think they truly appreciate you showing up if you're able and have a chance to do that.
What's on the menu this year, Ms. Thorne?
Steak.
Awesome.
No, I don't know.
I believe it is barbecue.
Barbecue.
Even better, I'll be there from 11:30 to 1:30.
To 1:30.
Only one helping, John.
Right, right.
You can have mine, too, I'm not a devil. You can have mine.
Terry, what else you got?
Under operational updates, just a note for you, someone had asked a couple meetings ago in regard to the fireworks and the Fair Board. Melody's been in contact with Mike Schillharvey, who had said he would be in contact with them to try to get an answer, but he has still been unable to get a confirmation from the Fair Board one way or another, as far as whether they are interested in being involved in fireworks or not. So, Mr. Schillharvey continues to work with them to try to get an answer to that question. And that's all that I have.
That's it. Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
I've got Mr. Gabers, the Public Works Director.
E.B. Maronboy. Item A is the approval to hire Jane Noble as maintenance labor.
Is he, is he ready to start, or has started?
He has not started. I need approval first.
Waiting for approval?
Yes, sir.
Good answer.
Just checking.
That's a right answer.
Good answer.
I make a motion that we hire James Noble at twelve dollars per hour as a maintenance labor in the Public Works slash Street Department.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Castorly, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the hire of James Noble at twelve dollars an hour as a maintenance labor in the Public Works Street Department. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent.
Next item I have is to hire Kevin Schraut as maintenance labor for Public Works.
Do you know how many applicants you had for, for these jobs?
No, I didn't. Not at the time I had no.
Top of your, I mean, I, I would imagine there would be a lot of people apply, but I, I don't know. You know, Terry?
We had quite a few.
There are many.
Many?
Brady's file was about this deck.
Okay.
So I don't know what the number is, but that's a considerable amount.
So we had, we had ample people to pick and choose from and evaluate.
I think she sent out an email. I don't know if it's, it didn't say how many people had applied.
Probably the top three that they were gonna interview or something like that usually what happens.
I can vouch for Kevin Shaw. I think he'd be a good worker.
I was, I was just gonna say it's a, it's a good day when we can employ him.
I agree.
Both through his work ethic and the quality of his work. I'm, I'm thrilled that we're gonna have him for us. I'll make a motion to approve Kevin Shaw as a maintenance labor in the Public Works slash Street Department at twelve dollars per hour.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Castorly, to approve the hire of Kevin Shaw at twelve dollars an hour as a maintenance labor in the Public Works and Street Department. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. Approval of sidewalk project on Bedford.
That total, that project was budgeted for nine thousand seven hundred dollars. I'd like to get the approval to go ahead with that.
And, and we're coming in at nine six, nine, six hundred fourteen?
Nine thousand six fourteen.
Okay.
Is that a new sidewalk or is that tear out and replace?
That's repairing what's there. So that's removing the old sidewalk, put a new base down and installing the sidewalk that's tore up.
Okay, so it's not repair, it's, it's repl, tearing it out.
Yeah, R and R, remove and replace.
Remove and replace. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the sidewalk project on Bedford Drive for a total projected of nine thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Castorly, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the sidewalk project on Bedford Drive in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. Pinkney Sidewalk.
That's between Roy and Worthington. There's some trip hazards in that there, and it's heavily traveled through there.
Yeah, that's definitely-
So we're gonna replace and repair what the trip hazards are.
We, ironically, I came the long way in down Pinkney and watched a family of five walking down, and lo and behold, the, the last straggling kid tripped and fell on, on the sidewalk. How much of that is gonna be replaced?
The trip hazards, there's, there's quite a few places in there.
What about the area over the creek there that is, is something-
It come out to be about a hundred foot total of sections being replaced here and there.
Make a motion to approve twelve hundred, bid of twelve hundred and five dollars and fifty cents for sidewalk repair on Pinkney from Roy to Worthington.
Second.
Just for clarity, these aren't bids. They're just project estimates we're proposing.
Correct.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Castorly, for the approval of the sidewalk project for Pinkney to Roy to Worthington in the amount of one thousand two hundred five dollars and fifty cents. Any other discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one, one absent. Mr. Gabers, you have anything else for us?
That's all I have for you. Appreciate it.
That was a cheap night for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess you can get an early start home. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
And you doesn't get to carry the funds over either.
Yeah. Those go to pay for the highway signs.
That's right.
I'm ready for Greg Haddishell, Chief of Police.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The only thing I have this evening is the approval for me to sign the memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. I think I alluded to this at the last meeting, that this would be coming, and actually just the day after, two days after that meeting, it finally made it into my hands. So we're the last agency to sign that for this year. But since they have been, since we've been in a relationship with them, which is just since July, they've opened fourteen investigations in the city, recovered and dismantled six meth labs, conducted two search warrants, made at least six arrests, and successfully seized marijuana, cocaine, heroin, and some illegal prescription medications. I have, have asked Mr. Greville as well as Mr. Wright to review this memorandum of understanding, and both of them are on board with it. So if you're approval, I will sign that and get it back to them.
Make a motion to approve the, to authorize Chief Haddishell to sign the memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to authorize Chief of Police to sign the memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. Any discussion, concerns? Roll call, please.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero, one absent. That all, that all?
That's all I have.
You're easy tonight.
Man, if someone's gonna start talking, I'm gonna have to shore still tonight.
You know, don't encourage it. Dottie Phillips, Recreation Director. What have you got for us, Dottie?
I have the September Recreation Monthly Report. And really probably the most important item to note is something you guys haven't seen before, which is upcoming programs for October twelfth. There's a hunter safety course that we are hosting. That was not originally something that we had planned on doing, so we added it, but there's no cost to us. We're doing that with the Missouri Department of Conservation. They do all the registration, everything like that. Basically, we make, we find a location to host it, and they take care of everything from there. So we are actually doing it down in Brad's Maintenance Building. And as of right now, there's, it's a two-part course. One of them is completely full with thirty people, and I think there's ten openings on the other one as of today.
How, how did we come into partnership with Department of Conservation on that?
Basically, it's, it's a pretty common program that recreation departments do.
Did they approach us? Did we approach them?
We approached them.
Good. Good.
So Jared Swatner, our Recreation Programmer, kind of took the ball and ran from that.
Earning his keep?
Yes.
Very good.
Any questions for Dottie? Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, I'm ready to go to Gabrielle. She's not here, so Terry, you gonna fill in for accounts payable?
Sure. The total for accounts payable for this evening's approval is one hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred one dollars and twenty cents.
I don't wanna get nitpicky, but I was just really surprised by this, that we euthanized twelve dogs. I'm assuming those are dogs, not cats or-
Dogs, well, dogs and cats.
Dogs and cats. I mean, is that typical?
That's not normal.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that seemed to be just an outrageous number.
Yeah, we're, if there's one thing that the animal control officers do, it's they do a good job of placing animals. Sometimes it's just difficult. This is really out of the norm. But I, I think-
It seemed really crazy to me.
Yeah, I think our stat last year was somewhere around ninety percent placement either into adopted homes or to a no-kill shelter from here. So really pretty odd that they did that.
Okay.
I would imagine the typical reason is they're diseased, or there's just no place to place them.
I just really hope we don't see that.
No, I don't expect it.
I just kind of found it a little bit appalling.
That's not typical. One thing that, actually, Gergen and I talked about sometime this week earlier was putting some of the animals that are available for adoption on our new City of Warrenton Facebook page.
Yeah.
And putting their pictures out there.
Yeah, I like that.
So we'll try to get that started fairly quickly.
I, I had some correspondence with Innsbruck and Truesdale, and they had, they had asked about if we would ever consider partnering up with them, where we all went together and had one animal shelter. Seems like we tried that one, at one time, and does anybody remember what happened on that?
Didn't work out.
Didn't work out. Okay, I was afraid of that. That's usually what happens. So, so if we get a large number like that again, that we can't find homes, I think Karen's willing to take them to her house.
Yeah, we'll just put them in X Alderman Tallo's backyard.
There you go.
There's always some speculation that we've received a lot of the county's-
I, I've heard that, same speculation.
I'll make a motion that we pay the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred one dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred and one dollars and twenty cents. Any discussion or any other concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero, one absent. Okay, we're done with Gabrielle. She can go home.
She can go home. Well, hopefully by the next time that you all see Gabrielle, she will have a new addition to her family.
That's what we were thinking, so best of luck to her. I'm ready for item fifteen, Grounds and Maintenance Director Brad Boozingkribs.
Evening, Mayor and Board. First is the invoice from Safe Slides. And if you look at the little paragraph that is there, it is, this is above what we were contracted for. In doing the slide, they encountered that the, the top coating did not come off with power washing like they anticipated. And he notified me that they were going to try to sand it, but I told him that if it was gonna cost any more than what was on our thing to notify me, that I would, that was, would be a board decision that would have to be made. He said he would. Came home that night, noticed the slide was painted, thought, oh, good, everything worked out fine. Called him and, and asked him, I said, I guess everything turned out. And he said, no, not really, that we had to sand the slide and do this. And I said, well, I said, I'm sorry that we're not, you know, I said, this is gonna be a board decision to pay you, pay you for this or not, because you knew what the situation was. If it was something that was gonna cost more, to let me know, we would get a hold of the board, and we'll have some kind of a decision. And he said, yes, he knew, and that's why, you know, he wrote this little thing about the, you know, he wanted for the integrity of the, the paint and stuff. He said this is the only way that he, he would do it. So I said, that was fine, but the only way that he was gonna get paid if you all decided to do it, so. In your eyes.
What do we think it was gonna be?
The, the, I think the original was five thousand six hundred and something for the coating, the, the top of it. So, I mean, you know, he's wanting another fourth thousand to sand it, which I know didn't take him much more than probably four or five hours to do.
Brad, if he had waited until this came to the board, what would your recommendation to this board be?
Well, I'm looking at this as four thousand just to sand it. Took, took him probably, had to be less than five hours to do it.
And I-
I'm looking at that as, you know, I'm, and he just did the top half of the slide. He didn't do the whole slide. He just did the top half.
Would-
I would say probably thousand, fifteen hundred would be mine, the bid what I was gonna do.
I, I guess my question, my question is, if he had said, we need to sand this for it to properly adhere and for the warranty to be applied, and it's gonna cost you four thousand dollars, and told you that upfront, what would, would your recommendation to the board to have been to pay the four thousand dollars? And if we opted not to pay the four thousand dollars, how could they have, would they have then not painted it? Could we have sanded it or, I, I don't know how that could have worked out.
Well, I don't know yet, but he knew going into this what it was. He came out, looked at the slide, so, I mean, to me, he did it. He knew what it was. I mean, you know, been down that road before when I was in business, you know, you do it, you think it's gonna do it, and well, you just eat this one. So, I mean, you know, and that's just, just the way it is, so.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, it wasn't like that he was bidding this blind. They were out, they looked at it, they looked at the paint. I told them exactly what type of paint was on it, gave them the exact, you know, where it came from, called them if you have any questions about it, how it was put on, gave them all the particulars, so.
But you didn't answer John's question. John questioned-
What would I have done it? I would have, I would have questioned how, how long it was gonna take, for one thing, 'cause four thousand, that's almost double what the, what it cost to paint it, for the paint and power washing it the first time. I, I would have, I would have told him, though. I would have said, you know, we're gonna have to go back to this. You're gonna have to show me where for it's gonna take four thousand dollars worth of sanding. I mean, you know, that, we, we would have had a sticking part there, because there wasn't that much sanding on it.
Did they sand blast it or sand it by hand?
Hand, hand sanded.
Hand sanded?
Yeah, with little orbital sanders. I mean, it came right, right off, 'cause to be done in that much, that size slide,
Well, I think if they was on a power wash, paint off there, it's kinda-
Huh?
If they thought they were gonna be able to power wash a paint off of it, it shouldn't have took much to sand it off.
Right. It didn't. It didn't, 'cause I, I mean, like I say, it was, they were working on it when I left. I came back and it was done.
So, so your position is that the, the bid was to remove the paint?
By any means, however they wanted to do it.
And, and then apply a new coating. They came out, they looked at it, they knew what they were getting into, and the fact that they did not properly assess the condition of the slide, and, and it therefore cost them additional money, that's kind of on them, by-
That's kind of the way I look at it. Unless you all feel different. I mean, they, they were the ones that came out on-
It's costing four thousand dollars.
They were the ones that came out and did the emergency repairs far as to get us going.
Some expensive sanding.
There's value in the relationship with them.
Right.
What it, what do you believe is fair?
I would say, I would say anywhere between a thousand to fifteen hundred. I mean, really, there was, you know, I, 'cause they already bid some of it. I mean, you know, they already had money figured into power worship.
Is it worth, rather than us authorizing a, an amount, is it worth us to try and negotiate Is it worth, rather than us authorizing an amount, is it worth us to try and negotiate that price? If they.
I don't think we have to negotiate a price. He gives a bid and we accept it.
And I understand that. I also want to have a good continuing relationship with this company, which, to my knowledge, there aren't that many out there. Ms. Thorne, your thoughts?
My concern would be that if they had not, if they had brought this to Brad and had said, we can't give you a warranty unless you do this, then I think we would have had to consider some additional costs in order to get the warranty.
Right.
So, you know, maybe we split it with them if that's what you all feel like is fair. But I would have been concerned to have them proceed with no future warranty.
And that's where I was coming from on it. And I think, I think that, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable to, to split the cost or compensate them for some of, some of the expense that they incurred. Whether it should have been their responsibility to foresee that or not, they did incur that cost, or some of that cost. But at the same time, I don't believe that it's necessarily our responsibility to pay the full rate and the markup, and they do bear some of the responsibility. I want to be, I guess my thing is, I want to be fair with them. I think that's how we have traditionally done business with our vendors and.
I don't think they handled it the appropriate way.
Agreed.
Because Brad asked us to contact him. But that being said, I do think they had additional costs in order to provide us with the warranty that I would assume that we would want to have on that.
Can we ask him what the bill would be for labor and materials? Because this is the markup price.
Sure.
And because of situation, I mean, if the guys, if the crew spent the time, did the work, we receive value. Do we want to overpay for the value because there was no discussion? I can see the point in not doing that. But on the other hand, if he would submit to us documentation for the labor and materials, which again, we much here, I have no problem paying that at all. He's not out of pocket.
How many people worked on that slide? How many was in the crew?
There were, I think, four of them, total of them that were there. Now, I don't know how, because the other ones were doing, some were doing the steps, the platforms, and there was one or two that was working on the slide.
And they're out of Fredericktown, Missouri?
Yes.
So we might be paying for travel time, too, there.
Well, they stayed here, they stayed in town, so.
How long did the entire project take? Was it a matter of day, a week?
Yeah. From the time they came in to the time they left, it was a week because they had one day that rang, so they had to stop and come back in and finish.
And the original total bid price was around $5,400?
Just for the, to do the slide? No, the other part was twenty some odd thousand.
So this would almost double what.
Right, that's, that was kind of what caught when I told Terry, I said, yeah, this is almost double what the slide costs, and that's just labor, just the sand on it. That was five hours. So that's what kind of got me.
Pretty expensive sanding.
I know.
I might give him an extra $1,000, $1,200 bucks, but.
I think, I'd like to see us go back and ask him to resubmit a bill to us for time and material so that we can make sure he's comped for his actual out-of-pocket costs. And if he wants to try to get more than that, then he has to come back with different. Because we don't know if his out-of-pocket cost was $1,000 or was $3,000 or whatever. I don't know how much time it took.
I would remind him of your timeframe.
Right.
Is he comfortable with that?
Yes.
The run board?
That's fair.
So we're going to have you contact him and ask for a breakdown on time and material?
That'd be mine, I'll do that tomorrow.
And we'll go from there, okay? How about the fire extinguisher maintenance bid?
Next, I would recommend we go with Fire Service Inc. out of Wood River, Illinois for a price of $1,481 for our fire extinguisher maintenance program.
Looks like there's a lot of companies in that business.
Yes, there is, quite a few.
Quite a few in the area and so forth.
We get the bid sheet from the fire department, usually has a number of people to get a hold of. Fire Safety has done it, not last year, but a year, but a couple of years they've worked for us, so.
The motion, we would go with Fire Safety's bid of $1,481.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Fire Safety, Inc., Wood River, Illinois in the amount of $1,481 for our fire extinguisher maintenance bid. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one Ebsen. What else, Brad?
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item sixteen, preference policy for local vendors. And we put that on the agenda because there's been previous discussion, I think, over the past year or so, trying to do business locally and trying to figure out a way that we need to change our policy and do something different. I asked Terry to do some research on it, see what other cities are doing, and you can see by the research she's done that everybody kind of has a little different scenario. Some cities and municipalities just take a flat stance that we're going to take the best, lowest, best bid. Others have all kinds of systems stuck in there. And the one that caught me, caught my eye, was probably St. Robert, Missouri, on page two there, where they stair-step it, you know, for the first $5,000. They have a percentage, if a local bidder's within a certain percentage of the low bid, they would give that person the opportunity to match the low bid up to the $5,000 limit and then stair-step it up in other increments there. So what's the discussion, Board?
Well, let me ask Council, what is, under law, what are our options? I mean, this is, this can be really simple, or we can make this as complicated as we want to. So if the law says, you can do what you want to do as long as you state your reasons, and that's all we need, that's simple. If we do stair-step, it's involved.
For a fourth-class municipality, there actually is no legal requirement to bid. The only thing that requires bidding is whether you have ordinances. Now, the state auditor has best practices that they say, these are the best practices in order to properly get the best price for the citizens. So, you know, I talked to Terry about it earlier today. The only requirement, the only rule for fourth-class city is with regards to health insurance, and I think inland marine, is that the other one?
And property.
And property and casualty insurance for bidding. And then there's also a bidding requirement if a board member is, you know, has a financial interest in a particular situation or whatnot. So my suggestion would be if you want to consider this local bid, that we put it into a written ordinance format. We make it very clear, and then we articulate the reason if you guys accept a local bidder over someone who's not the lowest bid, so that the policy really is clear, and then the reason in which each time a bid is accepted for a local bidder is clearly stated. And I think we did that sufficiently last time, and it was close enough. And I think you delineate what close enough means, you know, if it's 3%, 5%, a dollar figure, $3,000, $1,500, whatnot. And then we actually send it to the state auditor, because we have a pretty well-established relationship at this point, and say, do you guys have an issue with this? And get something in writing back to say, this is the policy we're going to do. I mean, I think it can be done absolutely, Alderman Ock. But I think you guys want to specify guidelines so that it's not abused. And then when you guys do decide, you articulate, this is why we're taking a local bid instead of, instead of, you know, the lowest bid.
One of my concerns would be if we enact a policy, something like this, are we going to restrict other companies from bidding? Are they going to say, you know what, there's no point in me wasting my time bidding because Warrens, they have this policy where they might accept the lowest bid. I might be making more out of it.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I think we got comments when we originally started bidding, Terry. Didn't we get comments like, well, they always give it local, or something like that? And so it took some time to build our vendor list so that we could really get, when we started bidding everything out, really get bids, get people to come and bid here. You know, a lot of the cities have ordinances, which I would, I don't really like the language of. Let's say you give the local bidder the opportunity to match.
That just doesn't seem fair.
That becomes kind of a difficult, you put the time together to put a bid, especially if it's a complex bid together, that would be a little bit maybe unreasonable.
This is one of them that I am kind of, you know, it's important to me to shop local. And as I tried to go over all of these different examples, there's too many factors. I mean, you talk about, is it a percentage? Well, if it's a percentage, is it a percentage, you know, we're good with paying 5% additional. Well, that's great on maybe a $100 purchase. What if it's a $40,000 vehicle? Where's the limit on that? What's local? Is it within the city limits? Is it within the county? Is it within a radius? Is it within a region? There's too many factors. And I came to the, there's no legal requirement. It's an auditor's recommendation. And I certainly understand that we, in general, want to do what is the best practice. But it would appear to me that there are, a policy addressing this creates more issues than it's worth. I would rather, there is a check and balance here of, without a policy in place, there is still a check and balance. It takes the majority of the board to pass this. And I am good with considering these purchases on a case-by-case. If I feel that it is of value to make that specific purchase local, let me make the motion, if somebody wants to second it and we have a vote on it. If the auditor doesn't believe that's best practice, they certainly can make that recommendation to us, and I don't want to snub my nose at that. But I don't think that you can have a policy to address every occasion that comes across, so.
I'm with John. I just think we should continue what we've been doing for the last 30 years. We haven't had an issue with it. The problem so much isn't the percentage, but it's, what's your definition of local?
Yeah.
I can really hit it up on that, because, I mean, we need to think about growth and economics on a broader scale than the city boundaries. Because your business owner says, well, I've been more than happy to bring my business into your city limits, but there was no ground for me to buy. So what, you penalize them going forward, but still, they live in the community, they support the community, you'll see. I don't see the need for it, from my perspective.
When the auditors were here, that was one of the things I kind of looked at very, very close. Are you doing things without a policy? So, and what I'm hearing from the board, or at least a couple of board members, don't change, or let's not worry about the policy, let's keep it as it is. Take the lowest, best bid and.
If there's a local thing that's close, and we feel like there's merit there, like the purchase on the vehicle from Gas Door Shrimp, the other meeting, you do it, you know.
I think our policy is to use the best judgment of the board to make the decision.
Good.
Because some of these are pretty simplistic. I mean, if we had to have something in writing for this simplistic one.
Yeah, I think it was, was it Troy just said, theirs was pretty simple.
We knew what we wanted.
Not exactly.
I mean, Pleasant Valley says, vendors shall be treated in a care and businesslike manner with preference being given to area vendors when all factors are compared. Well, how much more.
Yeah, we compare them all.
It gives you, it gives you an indication of what the board feels. I don't even know if that's necessary.
How about Alderman Flake? What's your thoughts on that?
No, I kind of agree with what John and Karen are saying. We've been doing this the same way for so many years, you know. It's worked out well. We give local bidders our business when we can, you know, and continue on that road.
Alderman Dryer?
Yeah, I agree with Brad, John, just.
So what I'm hearing, unless Alderman Cassely's got a comment, something different, that y'all are content going about it the way we've been doing it?
Yes.
Okay? Okay.
Thank you, appreciate all the legwork behind us.
Yes, thank you.
We have.
You know, if you wasn't paying attention, thank you.
You can find a sheet, one that researches it for me, so. Okay. No other discussion on that. We're going over to pay rate for Mayor and Board of Aldermen. And I'll take the blame for putting this on the agenda. I discussed this with, or asked Terry last year one time, when we had visited, pay schedule for the Board of Aldermen and Mayor, and she said she wasn't sure, but she thought it was seven or eight years ago. So I asked her to research it, because I think it's something that we need to visit or visit from time to time. We need to see where we stand with other communities our size and so forth. So anyway, what we came up with, we dug up the old ordinances. And the last time we visited, the pay schedule for Aldermen was actually 2001. And the change was made April 3rd of 2002, and we raised the pay for Aldermen from $250 a month to $400 a month. As near as we can tell and researching it, it hasn't been visited since. So I can assure the public that nobody here sitting on this board is here for the salary, that they have a hundred other ways they could make more money than what we're paying them. But the public needs to know, too, that there's more to sitting on these boards than just showing up twice a month for a meeting. Each one of these Aldermen, they show up for these meetings if we have work sessions. They show up for the work sessions. Each Alderman serves on various committee appointments, maybe myself or whoever the mayor is at the time. They also serve on other boards within the city. Some of them serve as advisor, all of them serve as advisor, either on the Park Board, the Planning and Zoning Board, the IDA Board, Tourism Board, which most of the time we require them to attend those meetings off and on, too. Besides that, the Aldermen attend open houses, ribbon-cutting ceremonies, employee events like service award programs, that type of thing. They don't get paid very much for the amount of hours and time they put into it. So that's my spiel. I'm going to throw that out to the Aldermen and see if there's any concern or if any of the Aldermen think we need to look at and change those pay scales for the Aldermen.
I think that there are a couple of different ways to look at the pay, not only for this, but for any elected official. You want to, in this position, this, if you change it to four, from $400 to $500 to $600, whatever it is, it is not compensation enough to make up for the hours spent. So you're doing this for something other than the money. That being said, it has to offset the cost of running for office. It has to compensate for some of the lost time away from family. But I think it will also, an increased rate sometimes will bring out a varied candidacy. When I thought about it, six of the seven seats up here, the last time they were up for election, were contested, which tells me that the pay is enough to offset whatever disadvantage of time, that there is still interest in seeking the seat. So I would probably have a different opinion if we didn't have contested races, that maybe, maybe a pay increase would lure out and give people a choice. But the people have had a choice on six of the seven seats occupied here. So I am certainly comfortable with the amount. And it needs to be noted that nobody, correct me if I'm wrong, a pay increase would not be realized by any sitting board member until after their next election.
Next term election.
I have to add to John, I kind of chuckle internally about whether it's an encouragement for people to run for city office, because I had no idea that the Aldermen got paid when I ran for public office. So I consider this to be public service. And yes, it's nice to have that little paycheck added to the monthly bill, and I do appreciate it, so it's not like it's not appreciated. But I don't do it because of that. And me, as a citizen, I feel this is my job for public service, which I encourage anybody that lives within the city limits to consider running for public office as part of public service in a way to have your opinion heard and represent those people in your neighborhoods and people you care about. So as far as I'm concerned, this issue is not one that I would change the current rate structure.
Alderman Ock, comment?
Oh, I think it's fine as it is. I mean, we're looking at something the public, I don't think, sees. You know, Wright City, $500, Washington, $400, Truesdale, $250. Wentzville, I'm really jealous of them, they get that extra $54, $58. $400, $58, how they're like.
I was stunned.
You need a $167. So there's no big numbers. I don't think any number is going to motivate anybody to run or not to run. I think it's fine the way it is.
How about Alderman Flake?
Well, I think it's fine the way it is. We're compared, compared to other cities, our size, we're right in the ballpark, we're right with them. So in the bigger cities, naturally, they pay more, but they got more revenue coming in and they got more responsibilities. The bigger your city is, the more difficult the job is. So I'm satisfied with the way it is.
Alderman Dryer?
I'm fine the way it is.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the board, we're willing to leave. So what I'm hearing from the board, we're willing to leave that pay structure as is and go on from there. Talk about the mayor's position, and the mayor, whether it's me or whoever's sitting in this chair. I went back and looked at the ordinances. In 2002, the mayor's pay was increased to $1,200 a month. Looked like the board revisited it again in 2004, increased the mayor's pay to $1,500 a month. Don't know what transpired, maybe Alderman Flake might remember some of that, or was around then. And then it was revisited again in 2008 and decreased to 750. I kept tabs of my time, the first year I was in office, and the first year in office, I averaged about 20 hours a week doing city business. Maybe not necessarily all here at city hall. In fact, the majority of my city business is probably away from city hall, doing things out in the public, being available for different speaking engagements and so forth. So, anyway, I averaged, I think my pay averaged $8.65 an hour. The second six months of my term, and I don't know what the reason with this is, either I'm getting older or slower, but I'm averaging 25 hours a week this year. I don't know, I can't put a handle on why, but it seemed like I'm involved in more requests within the community. And, for example, Thursday morning, I'm doing a greeting for the county commissioners for their 17-county conference over at the administration building, just to be there and give a welcoming remarks. It probably takes an hour, hour and a half out of my day, but it's just things at this position that you wind up happening to do. So, when I look at the neighbors, neighboring pay scales for mayor, one of the ones that jumps out at me is our neighbor to the east here, Truesdale, has a population of 732 people, and they're paying their mayor $1,000 a month. He must be doing something a lot different than I do, or better than I do. I look at Troy, and Troy did some changes on their mayor. At one time, their mayor was kind of also their city administrator, and they were paying him, I don't know, $40,000 a year. They've gone to more of administrator type thing now, and Troy's mayor's at $1,000 a month. Let's see, Wentzville, $1,100 a month. Union, Sullivan, $400, $500 a month. The other thing we looked at is, when I was at the MML convention, some of the mayors had talked about, they were on a monthly expense account. We kind of polled a couple of communities, and it doesn't look like that's really a big issue. The ones that are on a monthly expense account don't use it. So, that's not a situation. I would recommend, if we were gonna change something, that we probably should look at changing the mayor's salary and moving that more up in line with the neighboring cities.
Historically, I think I was on the board when we moved it from 1,000 to 1,500, I think, Fred, my memory fades me. I think we recognized at the time that Mayor Costello was spending a lot of time working for the city. You know, he was still running his company, and he was spending a lot of time, and the board wanted to acknowledge that by going from the 1,000 to the 1,500. Because, you know, because it is, for a person who's in business for himself and trying to be the mayor of the city, it is a sacrifice. You're not being comped for $500, because surely he could have made more money than $500 by selling a few policies. But there was a recognition of the amount of time he was in, and that's my recollection of why we moved it up to 1,500. I think we even talked about moving it higher, but he was really hesitant to do that. Am I right on that, Fred?
Yeah, you're right.
So, I personally, I don't have any problem with it going back up to 1,500. I mean, this takes, as the community grows, this takes a substantial amount of time on the part of person who's doing it, you know?
I get it, hey, this is a standard question. Being mayor, is it what you thought it was gonna be? And I have a standard answer. No, it's not what I thought it was gonna be, because the amount of time that it takes to do the job properly is probably about four times greater than what I anticipated. I was a little naive coming into the job, because I thought, you know, a couple meetings a month, two hours here, there, city hall, doesn't work like that. And in fact, I'm not sure you could do this job properly if you had a full-time, real job to report into every day. I think if I was still in my insurance business, I would probably either get fired for not being to the insurance office enough, or I'd have to give up the mayor's position, one of the two. And my wife can attest to this, she'll, I'll tell her, I'm gonna run by city hall this morning, and I'm probably gonna be there about 30 minutes. And it might be four hours later do I get back home. But truthfully, the majority of the mayor's job, I think, is PR work, and I spend more time out in the community, I think, representing the city and doing things for the city. So whether I'm here next year or somebody else, I think we need to look at that salary for the mayor and reset that. And I don't care what the board decides to do with it, I mean, which way you go on it, but it's probably something worth considering.
I will go back to, I think this is public service. And I understand you do a lot, and you have a lot of time, but if I was in the same seat, and I had these different functions to choose from, there's other people on the board that could represent you at a ribbon cutting. You know, Fred could represent you at a ribbon cutting. I mean, it's 750 here, but we also pay $45 for the cell phone, so that's, we're almost up to $800 there, where nobody else gets a cell phone up here covered. And, you know, Wright City's at 800. Wentzville is a much bigger town at $1,100 a month, and I would think with 29,000 people, the mayor has a heck of a lot more going on in Wentzville. So, I mean, with all due respect to the time you put in, I think everybody's expectations were that they probably weren't going to be putting in as much time as they do with conversations and meetings and stuff. But I think, I would probably, you know, recommend more time management and focus on the things that truly benefit the city, that you think would be the most important things to tackle. I have a hard time right now when we struggle about raising pay increases for other people, you know, doing $1,500. It's double, you know, the pay raise and, you know. Once again, I consider what we do up here to be public service. Maybe others will disagree with me, but I sure didn't run for this for anything other than public service.
Well, I agree, it's public service, and it's public service on the part of the mayor, but I think there's a significant amount of time to do that. And in fairness to the, you know, he could have board members do other things, but the reality is, there's one retired board member here. You can't do ribbon cutting on a weekday because you're out of town, you're working, I'm working.
Well, I'm local, I can do some of it.
Yeah, but, you know...
But I don't have to be available in the mayor's house.
About four people on the board here are local right now.
Yeah, but they also have jobs, so.
You know, it's up to the rest of them.
I agree with Cody, Cody's, you know, I understand some of you have real jobs, but I see the same people, same board members at the ribbon cutting. Now, I usually run into Fred. Fred, in my situation, he's retired, and he has time to do that. John gets away sometimes, and sometimes he can't get away. I think that just, that's part of the mayor's duties.
Yeah, and I would also say, though, that that's something Terry could be doing for us too. And I know, I know you cringe the thought of that, but, I mean, that's a public role that I think Terry could be active in in some of those situations.
I think the people wants to see the mayor. You know, it's just like, where I can go, you know, I'm second in command under VP of Services and Finance and Operations, I can go around and shake every employee's hand, I can be on the community. But people want to shake the hand of the boss. They want the boss to come by and pat them on the back and say, "Good morning, have a great day." It's different. I know my boss doesn't get it, but it is different, because that's the boss. And I think people look at the mayor in the same way. That's just my view.
Yeah, I can agree with you. And maybe I'm not a good person to say no to people to, you know, I find myself giving commencement addresses to the homeschooling kids. Could've said no. I find myself giving a talk to the oats transportation riders, you know. I don't know how much good that does the city, but as mayor, they want somebody in that position to represent the city and show up. So, it is a time-consuming job. I think maybe four times more than what I anticipated when I took the job. So. On this end, any comments?
I don't know about that. I mean, I'm again torn between, my view on it is, my personal view is, I look to this, this shouldn't cost me anything. My service, I believe that it does cost me something, but I try and minimize that impact to my family. Again, I need to be able to justify to my wife that I can cover my campaign materials when I run, and I'm not incurring a cell phone bill to, over and above what my pay But I don't try and equate my time and the compensation. I don't know if that's right or wrong, it's just, it's not something that I've had a thought process on, so.
I think you hit on a good point, you know, and I understand what Karen's saying, it is public service. When I look at my, the gas that I use, I mean, I don't turn gas expenses into the city unless I'm going on a long trip out of town. You like to think, maybe you should break even on what your expenses are and that type thing. At 25 hours a week, we're paying the mayor, I think I had it broken down to $6.92 an hour, so you're not even, I mean, we're not even paying minimum wage for, to do this job. So, that's my point in bringing it up.
I'd like to hear what Fred and Jim have to say.
Jim?
They have to get off to say something.
You got a comment on whether we should adjust the...
I'm like you, the first time I ran for alderman, I, it wound up being a lot more than I thought it was gonna be. But we used to have meetings probably two, three times a week back then, when we were here till 11, 12 o'clock at night a lot, so. I know that, you know, I don't see anything wrong with raising the mayor's pay up, you know, especially when it got paid more before, and then it got lower. I think the mayor shores was behind that, that he just decided he shouldn't be making that much.
Why did it get dropped? Do we, why did it go from 1,500 to 750? Any...
I heard shores thought the mayor didn't need to get paid that much.
He was leaving office.
When he left, and he...
Laying duck maker.
What happens when you have an retired schoolteacher?
And was it part that the role of the mayor was doing a lot more of the city administrative work?
I don't know.
No, I'm asking, I don't know.
I don't know either.
Well, I understand he was doing a lot more than he was supposed to be doing, but...
They all do that.
Alderman Flake, Alderman Ock wants to hear your comment.
I know he does. I know he does.
Not gonna get out without putting him on the spot.
Well, I know it's a very time-consuming job. All of our jobs are. I mean, you get the telephone calls, you get, you gotta go here, you gotta go there and look at things. You get complaints and everything else. And I know yours is more demanding and probably ours. But I don't know about doubling it. I could see possibly maybe a raise, but I don't know about doubling it. The $1,500 that they were paying back that one time, they were considering the mayor being a full-time, full-time mayor, and that's why they increased the salary. And then after that, that didn't work out too well, so they went back and they cut it back. That's the reason why it got cut back. So, those are my comments. I know it's very time-consuming, and I know $6.92 an hour isn't much money.
Not when you put in $75 of gas in your hotel.
I'm thinking about moving to Truesdale.
I'm turning to, yeah.
That was an alderman, if I was a mayor.
Let me see if I got this off center. I'll go make a motion, so we can make a decision. Make a motion, we increase the pay of the mayor to $1,000 a month.
I'll second it.
All right, motion on the floor by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Dreyer, to increase the incoming mayor in April of 2014 to $1,000 a month. Discussion.
I don't think we should be paying for the cell phone, then.
I'm not gonna go there, because I do believe that the mayor should, number one, it's sometimes a pain, you absolutely should be turning in mileage, I don't care if it's to drive the right city or not. I think we should, I think we should allow him to claim. We would allow our employees to claim those miles. We allow our employees to claim those cell phones. Personally, I believe that I probably make enough phone calls that are city-related, probably as much so as the mayor. That aside, why did we let John Clark off the hook tonight?
Where's he at?
You didn't let him off, you took his cell off the hook.
Well, when there's, to go to $1,000 a month, well, there's a motion on the floor. I, there's a motion.
Okay, any other discussion on it? I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Flake? Alderman Cornell?
Is there a time limit on votes?
If so, you can just pass me if I miss my time. I can't go, I can't go to $1,000. No disrespect, I'm not saying your time isn't of value, but I can't, I can't do an increase to 1,000 from 750. No, I'm sorry.
Alderman Chris Castily?
No.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried three to two with one absentee.
That's why it's probably dead John was in here, because he probably would've voted no, then you would've had to split Joe.
I don't think the mayor could vote on that.
No, that would've been, I would've had to like, call my city attorney.
All right.
We would've called the city council for that.
Thanks for everybody's effort on that. I'm ready for a motion to adjourn to executive session for legal counsel.
So moved?
Second. Motion by Alderman Castily, second by Alderman Ock, to move to executive session for legal counsel. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Chris Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absentee. We're adjourned.